Madam Sigur, marubukha tayong forum.
Um, talaga ng mga kagalang-galang ng miyembro ng Sanggri Ang Bayan, kagalang-galang Harmain, Chua, Jordah, Gatunggay Junior, Saigol, Tingson, Galan, Ong, Galang, Reyes, ah, kagalang-galang Arsoni K. Bernardo ang pati ng temporary presiding officer. There, ah, meron po tayong limang, ah, ah, nine members in the dynamics.
May meron po tayong forum. Retrosite to letter, increasing the resources of the previous session.
For your consideration and approval, the minutes of the ninety-first regular session of the eleventh Sanggri Ang Bayan of Sopronya Espanyola held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the session hall of the Sanggri Ang Bayan, Sopronya Espanyola Panawan. This was attended by the majority of the Sanggri Ang Bayan members. The temporary presiding officer, Honorable Michael L. Jordah, called the session to order at nine forty-four in the morning. The secretary called the room after the prayer and the singing of the national anthem. With the attendance of the majority of the members of the Sanggri Ang Bayan, the pres- the temporary presiding officer declared the presence of the forum to transact official business. For reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session, the minutes of the previous sessions were presented by the Chair to the body for consideration and approval. Prior to approval, Councilor Arsoni K. Bernardo manifested to stress that what was cited by Councilor Fred Haterongay Junior was only applicable for Congress but local governments adhere to the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one as it is considered as the Bible of the LGUs in their operation. He also cited that he was not able to comment about it since they did not have a copy of the minutes during the last session. But it was clearly reflected on the minutes that they were holding, so he could not copy it. Councilor Gatunggay Junior responded that he respected the opinion of the councillor and that he would answer the questions query of the councillor Bernar- of councillor Bernardo properly but not in the reading and consideration of previous minutes. He concluded by leaving a statement that most of the national laws were adopted by the LGUs. Councillor Bernardo defended that subject national law was not applicable to the local as it was used by the Congress since Congress holds session only once a year of indefinite duration but must adjourn thirty days prior to start of regular session. He added that local Sanggrian were mandated to meet at least four times a month. It is his understanding, but the decision will depend upon the the body. There having no further manifestations from the body and affecting no comments and corrections on the final copy the minutes of eighty-ninth regular session held on October fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Any comment, amendment regarding the minutes of the ninety-first regular session? Ina, can be move? Jordah?
I move forward. So, bangko po i-move, ma'am, tanong na po, kung po po tabi 'yung budget po sa atin, takawin din na, matansaya, accountant.
Na invite ba natin? Actually, i-move to three minutes recess. Ah, resume. I'm move, Councilor Jordah.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the minutes of the ninety-first regular session of the eleventh Sanggri Ang Bayan of Sopronya Espanyola held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the session hall of the Sanggri Ang Bayan, Sopronya Espanyola Panawan be adopted.
As we move on second day, the minutes of the ninety-first regular session of Sanggri Ang Bayan held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the session hall of Sanggri Ang Bayan, Sopronya Espanyola. While approved, for adoption. Letter F, Privilege and Question out, Councilor Harmain.
Subsetting. Wala na po magat, wala na po magasak, masbita. It po ay, pagod doon sa crosscuting, ah, memo. Nakita ko po kasi sa social media, may memo po si Accountant, no? Na, binatalan po ba tayo, or na secretary, ano, memo? Sa Announcement Under Mender, ito po kasi 'yung nakita ko doon. Na, ito po may may masmas ng ating acting mayor, 'yung pang-memo po ni Accountant. Kasi kung si Accountant lang po mismo ang gumawa ng memo dahil di niya dinaandun sa ating solving mayor. Ito po kasi nagkikreain ng parang panik doon sa ating mga tao. Dahil hindi mo rin maintindihan dahilan, no? Ang alam po kasi na pag-usapan na natin dito, pinaliwanan na nila na twenty-three million pesos ang ating, ah, hindi narealize dahil doon po sa mina, no? Na hindi po sila nakapagbiyahe at yata po ay, ah, hindi natin nakulit sa kanila, no? From thirty million, seven million lang po ang nakulit natin. Dahil doon sa mina na hindi nakapagbiyahe at muradaw po ang, ah, nikil sa ibang bansa. So, sinabi naman din natin na hindi natin kasalanan kung bumaba po 'yung nikil, no? Ang lagi lang po po sila, isang presiding. Ah, kung ito po ay, hindi naman basa ng ating pasurong po yang ah, acting mayor ay hindi po dapat maglalabas ng mga ganung, ah, papir ang ating po ang acting office or 'yung accountant natin. Na, parang siya na mismo, siya po mismo ang jasamot po sa mga ah, social media natin ng mga nati. Gumugulung, no? Gumugulung ang ating bayan. Dahil doon sa mga diuman no ay, hindi natin maswento ang lagi, oh. So, ang naintindihan ko niya, bisab-bisading, ang ating accountant ay under peripop ng ating ah,
Executive?
Yes, oh, eh, executive power ng ating chief, no? Chief Executive. At siya lang po ang may karapatan ng magsalita, no? At hindi po si Accountant isang presiding. So, yun na po ang akin.
Sige, siguro, sa Announcement Under Mender, tingnan natin 'yung memo ni Accountant kung sino bang siya nag-sign doon. Kasi, pagkaalam po rin talaga, 'yung municipal accountant, ah, dito, siya rin nag-sign, noted by pero masiguro to ni Kagob Stib eh, noted ni Kagob Stib. Pangalan ni Mayor, unang pangalan ni Mayor, noted ni Mayor, pero 'yung sign parang kay Kagob Mansul.
So, ang may karapatan po magsalita dyan, ibig sabihin, 'yung office ng Mayor, hindi po 'yung office ni Accountant. Then si Accountant po ay nagka-trabaho under ng office ng Mayor, under ng, ah, command responsibility po ng ating Mayor. At 'yung mga reklamo dyan, tingin ko hindi lang, hindi dapat siyang nagre-reklamo, kasi malamang kunya siya. Nagche-check po, dine-check niya, kung ah, tapa pa 'yung bondo, dumasok pa 'yung bondo, kulang na ba 'yung bondo. Pero, ang nag-aano dyan, 'yung mga nag-sisingil dyan eh, Treasury Office, ang nagbabayad ni Budget Office. So, may ganyan-ganyan po tayong mga command responsibility. Ang nangyari po kasi parang lumalabas, na si Accountant po ang bigay ng memo, siya napong nag, ah, announce dyan, no? Ah, nagpost, nagpost 'yung mga ano dyan, kasi lalim po, lalim po sa kanya, office nila.
Siguro, mag-invite na lang natin si Accountant next session, tanungin na lang natin. Sa pagkaalam ko, hindi rin talaga sa pwedeng mag-issue ng memo dito, kasi siya hindi siya chief executive. Man, 'yung dito kasi sa atin, ano lang, 'yung office, accounting office hindi kagaya ng National Office, Department of, ano 'yung budget, pwede siyang mag-issue ng circular, or ano, pwede 'yung, pero dito office under sa ng chief executive. So, tanungin na lang natin siya pagdating ng Monday.
Ay, dyan, isab-bisading, ayun lang ako nagkaano dyan, wala, dyan na ganyan ko. Ah, meron po pinapermahan sa akin na, ah, lender para sa kanina, hindi ko na rin pinapermahan, gawa nga ng twenty. Alam naman natin ang dahilan eh, nagpagsort natin, nasort po tayo doon sa unrealized, unrealized, kaya po tayo ng crosscut. No? Kaya naunin na po, sana, hindi na 'yung paliwanan dyan dito. Pero, kung, ah, ano tamari naman ang kumita dyan po na talaga?
Any privilege and question out? Wala na? Hey, let's proceed to letter G, Presiding, Underkeeper, Propose Mission and Communications. Per five, privilege. Oh, sige, sige. Privilege and Question, Councilor Gatunggay.
Hindi po, Mr. Presiding. Ah, I visit po ito sa, paliwanan ka ng ating Mr. Presiding. Ah, dito lang rin, ma- ano, malubos may sit. Ah, kung bakit naghihintay po natin sa social media, 'yung mga nangyayari na to, nawala ng bundo 'yung bayan natin. Nakakaover po 'yan sa atin, hindi lang isang nagtrabaho, kasi alam natin lahat, bago ilabas 'yung kapirahan ng ating bayan, pinipirmahan ng Treasury, pinipirmahan ni Accounting, nakakapick sa Budget, lahat, maraming nakapirma dyan. So, bakit parang ang sisi, dito po sa ating mahal ng Mayor, doon po sa ano, maging kuwan po tayo, maging pantay po tayo sa pagtingin. Hindi natin dito sinasabi na, ah, humampit tayo sa isang side, oh, kasi kung nakita niyo ba si presiding, hindi tayo ako nakialam sa social media, tutalig. Kasi, ah, 'yung trabaho natin nakapiktuhan dahil dyan sa hindi maganda. Ah, sabihin natin, matapan tayo, kung sa social media, matapan tayo. So, at kung matapan sa social media, pero 'yung ipiktunan sa bayan po natin ay hindi maganda. So, dapat pag-isipan natin ng husto, ang lahat na ginagawa natin kung ano man ang sama, yun ang gagawin natin. Political agenda, no? Huwag ganon, 'yung political agenda lang, hindi. Kasi kung nais lang natin, masira 'yung mga tao, nananaban natin, ilalabas natin ito 'yung ganito, ang nangyayari sa bayan natin, hindi maganda para sa atin, nananungulan dito. Uy, akin, ako, Mr. Presiding, nag-o-open lang ako ng mind ko, kasi ah, ako, purong tingin lang eh, hindi naman ako nagre-react, wala naman akong call. Pero, parang masakit para sa bayan natin, na ganon ang nangyayari. Which is, kung sakali man na may nanakaw na pira, kasama, kung sakali ha, wala akong sinasabing na may nanakaw sa atin. Kung sakali man na may nanakaw ng pira, 'yung lahat na nakapirma doon, involved. So, sa mga naglalabas doon sa social media, dapat maisip po natin yun. Itong Mr. Presiding ah, first, ah, first time po itong ito, dahil parang kahirap dapat apitingnan. Kung mag-nagtatanong na 'yung one sa atin, nagtatangong na ibang bayan, nagtatangong na sa atin 'yung ibang mga taga-providence, bakit ganon na, ah, pakrap na 'yung bayan ng Sopronya Espanyola, hindi po. Dahil hindi narealize, nag-tipid tayo sa ITI, di ba? Sinabi ko rin 'yung flag ceremony. Nagtipid din na tayo sa ating era ng may ITI, di ba? So, nandyan parin 'yung pira, kaso lang ah, dahil marami tayong mga pinapasok noon, hindi natin narealize, nagka- nagkaroon tayo ng problema. Dapat mauunawaan po natin 'yan eh, di ba? Nagmatapa parin tayo tanggalan, nagmatapa tatanggal 'yung ating, ah, new service. So, walang, kaya nga sinabi ko doon sa flag ceremony, wala tayong dapat sisihin dito. Hindi ko sinisisi 'yung minahan bakit hindi sila nakapagbayad, kasi kunti na nga 'yung kanilang, one, bakit kay magbabayad ng tarte 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 million, di ba? Pero, sana maisip natin, bago tayo maglabas na mga ganyan, maisip natin ang kasiraan din nating lahat dito. Hindi lang, sige, isbiguhan, sila susbigat to by, tayong lahat ang masisira tayong, hindi natin nauunawaan kung ano 'yung, ah, nangyayari. Ulitin ko po, if ever, na may hulmag nanakaw, 'yung lahat na nakasign dyan sa pagbubigro ng pira, kasama po 'yan, pandaan po natin. So, thank you very much, Mr. Presiding, ako, nilalabas ko na 'yung ating salubin dahil masakit na sa matahe 'yung ating naghigit. Which is, ah, pangit po sa bayan natin. Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding. Sana maliwanan ka na, 'yung mga ating mga ibang, ah, thank you.
Any privilege and question out? Wala na? Retrosite to letter G, Presiding, ah, Councilor Bernardo.
Mayroon po kasi akong nakikitang mga pangalan doon na, sa nagupupas natin, Emily na lang, nakalagay doon, tapos 'yung basta may mga, may mga, may mga taga-office sa akin dito na nag-sasamso doon. Kaya, madam sekretary, makaku, pwedeng give advice natin? Pero, 'yung iba, mga Maria Mercedes, mga one, hindi ko nakialam. Pero, may nakita ko ng Emily na lang, ay, sana po, dito na trabaho sa atin, no? Makaku po pwedeng i-repay na lang po muna natin ng pag-aano. Kita mo 'yun sa atin ni Kagob Gatunggay, ito po ay kasi natin ang bayan, na natin lahat. Oo, na magulat tayo dito sa tim bayan. Makaku pwedeng po bakat, by sa na lang, si madam, nakita ko 'yung pangalan niya. O, yun lang po.
Kasi social media kasi 'yan, halos lahat nakikitang kung sino gustong mag-comment, dyan lang, hindi hindi natin kasi pwedeng i-control niya, kasi maliban lang kung may evolution siya, kaso ano siya ng cybercrime o anong pagdoon.
Yung ah, isab-bisading ako, advice lang, advice lang po, baka madulas tayo, makapag, ah, ano tayo doon, makapag comment po, makapagpost po tayo ng, makaka- ano sa atin ng cybercrime, no? Kaya sayang, hindi naman, imbes na, di ba? Okay na, naging, ngayon po tayo, naunang kasubat pa, so yun lang po, palalala lang po 'yung wala pong ano.
Noted, palalalaan lang natin. Okay, wala na? Letter G, Presiding, Underkeeper, Propose Mission and Communication, number one?
Forwarded Resolution Number Thirty-Three Series of Twenty Twenty Four of Barangay Pulod Center, A Resolution of January, eh, Investment Plan of Twenty Twenty Five of the Centers of Sopronya Espanyola Panawan for Appropriate Review.
Refer to Committee on Rules, Rules and Communication.
Refer to Committee on Rules, Rules to Appropriate, yes?
Refer to.
Forwarded, Forwarded Resolution Number Nineteen Series of Twenty Twenty Four of Barangay Labo, Approving Appropriation Ordinance Number Two Series Twenty Twenty Four and Ordinance Approving the Supplemental Budget Number Two Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four of Barangay Government of Labo, Sopronya Espanyola Panawan, Involving Fund from General Fund, MOE, Amounting to one million sixty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-six pesos and twenty percent Development Fund amounting to two hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred sixty-seven pesos and ninety-six cents for appropriation to the different projects, programs, and activities of the barangay and for other purposes for appropriate review.
Refer to Committee on Finance.
To Committee on Finance.
Letter F, set na. Committee Reports, Committee Reports Number One. Committee on Finance.
Committee on Financial Management and Development report as blank. Certified by Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation. Subject: Review and Proper Discipline for Budget Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four of Barangay Puna. For the Presiding Officer, the Committee will see of the Presiding President's position and already have considered the same and like to represent. It's recommendation of the public justification to read. Number one, the supplemental budget number zero one, is considered effective for Barangay Puna. Ah, submitted by the Municipal Department Officer, is currently applied for the position RA seven one sixty and other existing medical devices, which are relations to the department of management. Number two, for the barangay council of Barangay Puna, savings from fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, then total amount of the, of two million meter twenty-four thousand twenty-two share from National Bureau of Special Organizations, and pro last August twenty twenty-four, but, as received by the Sanggri Ang September, twenty twenty-three. Supplemental budget includes two million eight hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-two pesos and two cents allocated through, ah, booking ordinance number thirty-four dot zero one, which was founded for programs and projects reflected. Breakdown of expenses, number one, eighty percent intra. Ah, improvement of the public market, of reserve, that is sale, store, two million two hundred sixty thousand ninety-seven five sixty-two, or two twenty percent value. Value of thirty-four, upon a five hundred sixty-five thousand twenty-four, total ah, subtotal two million eight hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-two, considerate. By this, some recognition, the committee in consideration of the foregoing justification of town, the reasonable budget was, ah, done in conformance with all existing laws and policies, those in provision. However, it was noted that appropriation on this order forward to the Sanggri Ang Review on September seventeen, twenty twenty-four, more than the mandate ten days from the date it was approved with was twenty percent, ah, ah, August twenty twenty twenty-four. Now therefore, the committee recommends that that concerned council be reminded through the municipal budget officer and the mandate stipulated in section seventy-three of the Local Government Code in further criticals, the passage of the resolution approving their appropriation on this number twenty twenty-four thus zero one, of barangay Puna, now the supplemental budget number zero one, strictly related to the calendar, which will be the address particular session. Repet by your school, each and committee on finance, budget, appropriation, code for the twenty-one junior, then of his age, of nineteen twenty.
Any comments, amendments regarding the Committee Report? Ina, can be move?
Under the Committee Report Number Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Blank, the Committee on Finance, redaction of the supplemental budget twenty twenty-four project Puna, Sopronya Puna Panawan, be adopted.
Committee Report Number Twenty Three Dash Blank, submitted by Committee on Finance, budget and appropriations approved for adoption. Number two? Committee on Finance.
Committee Report Number Dash Forty, part of the financial finance budget appropriation request for reprogramming twenty percent development fund and implemented counterpart of profiting department to market road national highway, city of this project, project subsidiary, Ranparangay Labo, via the priority project, amounting to eighteen million five hundred thousand. For Presiding Officer, the Committee Report Two, consider this application will lead down, same like persons, planning recognition, valid justification. Ah, this, the municipal mayor provided request to consider, have this resolution number twenty twenty-four, a resolution in closing, the report programming, the development pa- development plan of unimplemented counterpart of completing the part to market road from national highway, to this, this, project, city, project, subsidiary, Ranparangay Labo, to be available for private development projects amounting to eighteen million five hundred, ah, thousand, eh, dam- ah, five hundred thousand pesos. Number two, that during the project evaluation, it was planned the year is about to end, but the project was not yet started, and LCLG requires to the session twenty percent development fund as non-useable indicator. Number three, the amounts of utilized following A, completing for the market road national highway, to Marana, project Puna. The B, offering of completing the road to Ang San, Marana, part to market road, project Puna. One, one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-four pesos. Construction of part to market road, ah, project center, seven million. The rehabilitation of the isin-nyaran road, one million five hundred. Rehabilitation of the Langsi Road five five hundred thousand. Improvement of the purpose for the, Ranparangay Elementary School, four hundred, improvement of the purpose of Marana, Elementary School, four hundred thousand. Improvement of the purpose of the top, four hundred, improvement of the purpose for the top of the elementary school, one million. Improvement of roads, one nine barangays, three million seven hundred forty-two thousand one hundred fifty-six. And a loan amortization, two million and improvement of these programs. One million. By the recommendation, the process of the, the committee finds that preprogramming is extremely needed, therefore, the committee recommends to approve the same through a resolution, be colored in the second meeting on this particular session. Repet by your senior, committee on finance, budget and application, code for, don't forget Gatunggay Junior, then of his age, of nineteen twenty.
Any comment, amendment regarding the Committee Report? Imbes, but siguro, sa draft nari, lagyan na lang natin itong total na lahat, kasi mahirap mag-compute ito eh. Yung total niya-
Eighteen million.
Kaya nga, dito sa breakdown niya, sige na po ngayon, total, kung lagyan na lang natin doon sa draft nari.
Ah, sige.
Any comment? Wala? Can be move?
Under the Committee Report Number Dash Twenty Two Dash Forty Five, be adopted.
Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Forty Five, submitted by Committee on Finance, budget and budget by adapted. Number three, Committee Report Number Twenty Seven Dash Zero One, submitted by Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number Dash Twenty Two Dash Zero One. Committee on Rules, love to comment, bring the just, Committee on, ah, Health Services, Review, barangay Ordinance Number Zero Series, back to barangay Puna. The Committee Report, consider this acting measure, how long the same would like to present, inspiring the conditions within, within the following domestic. Ah, Number one, the barangay council, part of the review, and in update ordinance, which prohibits open defection, willing by barangays and request, all household to have sanitary toilet violation, their option be penalized, scholars, first, opens, five hundred pesos in five distributed work, second, offensive hundred pesos in one week community work, and third, first, five hundred pesos in fifteen ah, days community work. Compared to the six sixteen of local government, it is every local government units to exercise the powers expressly granted, those necessary implied, there from, as well as the tower are necessary appropriate in incidental exhibition and effective governance, and those weeks are essential to promotion of general welfare alongside those ordered, ah, six three nine one A one. Of the same code, this, best, ah, Sanggri Ang barangay, the power to enact ordinance may be necessary to discharge responsibilities compared to bank it, and to promote general welfare of the in order of the year. Number three, that the declared intent of enactment is to protect young children from, ah, disease caused by unnecessary environment, as well as to promote sanitation and general welfare of the people, including that they are adhering to the eight-point agenda of the Department of Health, which is preventing disease and promoting health and achievement, well, DEA for all of its citizens. Number four, of the Sanggri Ang barangay, are permitted to impose fines, or penalties, not exceeding ah, one thousand pesos, under by the six three nine one eight thirteen, eh, available government code. Number five, the local government, call on the police, the local Sanggri Ang, strict rules, fines and penalties to violation of local laws, where the there exists RA one one three six two oh, community service act which authorized the court to impose community service in lieu of imprisonment for the penalties of Asundon, Asundon Mayor, subject loss, not this explicitly allow the local Sanggri Ang to use the same. By this recommendation, for going forward, consider the company fine, subject barangay of nine, rest in our, the ordinance which governing laws and services as well of the government, are mandated to use its vested power to promote general welfare. However, penalty involving community work does not have, ah, sufficient loss to back up its position. Those it is recommended, the penalties imposed be amended, and is by the vice, that this recommendation be committed to the Sanggri Ang barangay for the unfortunate benefits of the protection.
Any comment, amendment regarding the Committee Report? Yes, sir, after docencia, funcional, parang in private na may to, kaya parang parehas na dito sa person.
Dapat ito mas mataas, lakaw one thousand. Two cents, as per one, one thousand.
Lagyan na lang natin ng 1,000, kasi mas mataas na dapat sa tayong. Ah, 1,000 po, mas, okay, lalagay error lang.
Any comment?
Uh, at sila, lalang, thank you. Parang sure na yung mapansin natin, pero, baka doon lang sila pumawis sa 15 days community work. Si, one week community work, tapos na 15 days, doon ba, ta, simple, paring na na yung, third offense was lesser than second offense, yung, picture of 100.
Yung, uh, method, uh, record. Doon, doon pa sa ano nila, yung sa original na ordinance ng barangay, ilan ba nakalagay? Siguro, anu na lang natin sa second reading?
Ah, siya second reading.
Any comments pa? Lalang, can be moved?
I have the committee, gentleman telephone number 22 thus 01, via NFT.
Committee report number 22 thus 01, submitted by committee on rules, laws for government and privileges, be adapted. Number 4? Written rules.
Committee report number 2024 thus 54, of a, what is up barangay, 02 series of 2024 barangay Labo. Kasi sana mayroon, ikaw mo ano nito, na bigla. Tambak na. For presenting, officers, the committee to its website, official, separate to have a review, consideration, this. Those who would like to present this finding, recommendation, and following information, please. Number 1, barangay ordinance number 02 series of 2024 was enacted, the subject barangay Labo, regulate the trending or selling of the seafood products, where the barangays are simply penalized, those who would like to value the provision, according to the following. First, offense warning, second, offense 500, and two days provision sell in barangay Labo, the third offense, 1,000 and one week provision to sell, the way, Labo. That, uh, the subject ordinance, regulate the selling of any type of money products to groups, and churches, barangay, several long the national highway, as it's only allows piddling on seafood products from 10 AM onwards, and requires selling of the same, a designated stall in barangay market, from 7 AM to 9:59 AM. Subject ordinance, further allows pender piddler on motorcycle who are non-residents, barangay, upon payment of corresponding fees. The other local government unit are given mandates to promote general welfare and enhance economic stability and social justice, as provided in the local government code 2091. That, number 4, that the inactive board can self-pay, trip to be economy capacity or capability and opportunity of inheritance, barangay Labo. Number 5, the section 391A13, of the local government limits defined that could be post barangay to 1,000. So, by this recommendation, in view of doing, the committee is in opinion, but right ordinance has been enacted, within the ambit of the law, providing the powers, subject barangay, those the ordinance pass is valid, and in ordinance with the law, therefore, the committee recommends to approve the same on this, findings, leave one, education, barangay council, point, permission, number. Prepared by yours truly, chairman committee on rules, most of the government, number 20, just, code for number 5, I got to my junior, Michael Jordan, then official.
Any comment, amendments regarding the committee report? As in, can be moved?
I have the committee report number 22 thus 54, via NFT.
Committee report number 22 thus 54, submitted by committee on rules, laws for government and privileges be adapted. Number 5, committee report, submitted by committee on rules.
Uh, committee report number 22 thus 55, is given by committee on rules, laws for government and privileges, review of, but as a, some barangay, 06 series of 2024 barangay Labo. For presenting, officers, the committee on rules, laws for government and privileges, have considered subject measure had already been, uh, done, the same would like to present its finding and recommendation, the justification, does it, here under. Number 1, the subject barangay of Labo, has enacted, barangay ordinance, number 6 series of 2024, which, uh, specifies the guidelines for up raising within a barangay, and have finalized the violation as follows, a fine of 300 pesos, the fine of 500 pesos, and fine of 1,000 pesos, under the 12 prohibition of to raise house. Number 2, the subject ordinance, only allows residents to raise up to two pieces of house, pigs for densely populated areas, or dense housing with pigsty and shifting town, to avoid scattering, excretion, or power smell, and might warm harm the node tables. The ordinance for the request, having a water tank, and those, who intend to raise more than two pigs, must put 100 meters away from the residential area. The dependent guys, uh, there you given the mandate to exercise all these powers, to promote general welfare and healthy and safe, they have been in habit, and the subject civilians are further directed to enact ordinance for the realization of the given mandates. Number 4, that the guidelines were enacted, with the intent of regulating the up raising business, any, oh, in the AOR, and ensuring that the residents will practice safe, and they clean away arising s- seriousness of the safety, you know, there in habit. Number 5, the subject barangay is allowed to post fine, running 100, 1,000 pesos, and provided in the section 391A13 of the local government code. Number 6, the municipal ordinance number 2024 thus 1, related, regulating the operation of figery and public farm, is part of the, so, from the manual, article 825, previous any form of figery in all barangay's property areas, and article, uh, 9, section 24, only permits 3, 2, latening, and 1, borrowing piece of a figery, and section 20, there of orders, compliance, park, use chemical, control supplies, and larva, to minimize source of pollution. By this recommendation, nation society institution, they have found the fines, that in a good ordinance, which the pow, the best power of the local government unit, those valid, and in ordinance with the law, however, provides must carry to the municipal ordinance, the regulations, figuring operations in the municipality. Prepared by yours truly, chairman committee on laws, government, and officials, number 20, uh, number 20, then, I got to my junior, coach, and number Michael Jordan, then, then, official.
Any comment, amendments regarding the committee report? As in, can be moved?
I have the committee report, number 22 thus 55, the committee on rules, laws for government, and officials, review, that 53 barangay series of 2024 barangay Labo, via NFT.
Committee report number 22 thus 55, submitted by committee on rules, laws for government, and privileges be adapted. I, calendar of business. Okay, unfinished business, from videos administration. Unfinished business, from previous administration, none, from previous session, none, business for the day. Second reading, business for none, today. I have Mr. President, um, the committee report, number, in this particular session.
Approving the supplemental budget, bah, yeah?
It's a 10, punang.
10.
Nakakatikan 62.
Uh, draft resolution number 2024 thus 278. Approving the supplemental budget, number 01, is called 2024 barangay punang, number 44. Most of yours truly, there is, presented review, the approval, of the subject bayan, is the supplemental budget number 1, is called 2024 barangay punang, which has duly authorized through provisional ordinance number, si, 1, barangay year 2024, so, if you adapt it through resolution number 54 thus 2024 passed by the barangay council on August 20, 2024. There are subject budget, complex adherence, and compliance to all budgetary requirements, provided for, all, for, in all, of the permanent condition, the product act, 7160, and other existing budgetary requirements, due to any reservation, by the Department of Budget Management, UCM, as well. There are, similar to, barangay budget officer, flex definition, was approved by subject adherence, to condition, and stipulated in the UCM, therein. Whereas, section 33, 3 years, local government directs copies, of the, uh, provisional notice, general provider. The subject bayan, through, the municipal budget officer, but subject supplemental budget, was on submission, on September 24, 2024. Whereas, upon, through, consideration, the office various, said, to prove the supplemental budget, and then, after review, letter, the one, the municipal budget officer. Now, the promotion, councilor, grand, is, duly, is, committee, councilor, grand, is. Result, let's say, the result, to approve, the supplemental budget, number 01, is called 2024, of barangay punang, supreme, supreme line, will be the amount of 2,825,132 pesos, and, uh, 200 pesos. Result, pardon, and the comments, recognition, of the municipal budget officer, likes, in the review, later, shall probably give part of the appropriation ordinance, and conditions, through the case, that again, strictly complied with. The subpar, as capes of this resolution, the partners, the barangay council, barangay punang, office of the municipal mayor, office of the municipal counter, office of the municipal budget officer, and all other, the certain, information, of the municipal council.
Any comment, amendments regarding the, uh, supplemental budget of barangay punang? As in, can be moved?
I have, then, the, draft resolution number 22 thus 278, the supplemental budget, number 01, is called 2024 barangay punang, number 44.
Second, approving the supplemental budget of, number 01, is called 2024 barangay punang, from the, punang, palawan, be approved for second reading, and the calendar for third, and final reading on this particular session.
What? Uh, draft resolution number 24 thus 279, approving the programming of the 18,500,000 pesos. From the, at the, 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 part, for, complete the farm, to market road, national highway, situated barangay punang. Situated barangay Labo, uh, 20% development fund, out of 22, selling to the, where the area, every company, development projects. Most of by yours truly, there is, that local chief executive, with best, the coordination data, of overtime, when he did the first. Notification, endorsement, municipal development council, is exhibited in the resolution number 22 thus 09, for the program, the unimplemented counterpart, part-to-market road project from national highway to city of isis, barangay, situated near barangay Labo. Whereas, the unimplemented counterplans, to 18,500,000. Whereas, the 20 city, city program, is say, is say, is set, amount, for the development projects, as follows. Uh, completing of part-to-market road, from highway to barangay punang, Opening of the completing of roads to occupy, the, 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 uh, one hundred thirty-four. And, conquer, uh, the statue, part-to-market road, and the 279, 200,000. And then, rehabilitation, by this, by this, barangay road, 1,500,000. Rehabilitation of the road, 500,000, improvement of multiple purpose of barangay, elementary school, 400,000, improvement of multiple purpose of barangay, elementary school, 400,000. And, improvement of roads to 9 barangays, 3,740,000, and 1,566. Construction of, whole, whole farm art, somewhere, and to, uh, improvement of municipal laws. Uh, sufficient. Now therefore, uh, machine, yes, surely, the, the, by, parcel, grand, is, so, as a, so, for, 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 of the 18,500,000. From the, at the, 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 construct, complete, the, the, part-to-market road, national highway, situated is, and, or, and, 20% of the, and, 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 the, the, price. And barangay 20% development, and add a department, a department of affairs. The sub finality, scap is subject of affairs, to the office of municipal mayor, office of municipal counterpart, office of municipal department, office of municipal, so, video, and all other concern for the municipal.
Any comment amendments? This is a committee report, for the senate, ma'am, sir. Because this alone amortization, around here, this one, well, probably, well, not bad. Yeah, but any assistance, they not handy, okay, this, this a two, one, sa, four, this, this, bang? But if I'm going, will it be, will it be, yeah, yeah? This is, ah, this is, ah, this is, ah, this is, ah, this is. 5 minutes, yes, yes, it's enough.
Uh, para, tagalala po nito, most of the number of art, and sa, internal decision, po yun, po.
Any comment amendments? I hope, sir. Approving, any comment, amendments regarding councilor, Iga Tungay?
Uh, Mr. Presiding, may pinahabot, doctora dito, na, po, building, atigal po natin, kasi the head, sir, head, 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 sir, po ng abu-abo, na, tingin ng asinal. Uh, nandito natin, papakalain na, hindi, uh, hindi pala, sagot ng asinal, yung, kurye. So, nakiusap po yung ating doctora, napakapwiting ipasok ngayon uh, at nag-usap ko na ng tao ngayon, na, atin, palakusap ang DC, yun. Uh, doon po sa improvement of roads, na, dito, 500,000 po, yung, uh, budget. So, kailangan na rin po natin ito, kasi naguna po lahat ng gamit ng, uh, ng center ngayon. Kailangan na parang siya malagyan ng kurye, kasi, hirap din po, na, walang magbukod sa ito, sa loob. So, this is, ah, pa, atigal po ng ating mga kawan, ng, pariusap ni, doctora, na, pakapwiting, ipasok po natin ngayon at doon po siya, ipabawa sa, uh, improvement of the roads ng mga barangays po, hindi rin magbigay, sir.
500,000, po.
Dito, Mr. Presiding, dito sa improvements of, uh, roads for nine barangays, 3 million, by, by 30,000. Bale, bawasan natin yung 500,000 po.
3 million, 140,000.
Tapos.
Magkakatip.
Magka-nato ng, po, 930, na, ating, mga idols, 39,000.
Ano nga yung, pagkakatip yung panang abu-abo, ano?
Aa, super health center.
500,000. Let's take a break, sir.
Electrification, for abu-abo, super health center. Electrification po.
500,000.
500,000 pesos. Ah, isisingit po ngayon.
Bago itong improvement pala, 3 million, 142,000 na lang.
Aa, 3 million pesos.
Any comment, consular, Jorca?
Kung, kapatigal na po ni Chairman. Kasi, baka, wala na rin tayong supplemental, may mga travel, who, ay, sa, ngayon, December, baka, pwede tayong maglamping dito, kahit na, maliit lang na bagay, pwede ba? Pwede, pwede sa bagay, yun. O, kahit, tagte-terti lang, may, pwede po tayo sa, ano eh, December 1st, kung, okay lang po sa inyo, ah, sa, presiding, sa Chairman.
Ay, hindi pwede. O, 50% pala, 30, sa, ano yun?
PS? 30%? Hindi natin pwedeng singita, 20%? Solusyon na rin, bigyan. Projects ito. Di pala, baka may, 20% na po pala ito?
Manutid lang sa pumitan finance, yung request ni Gorga, Jorca, baka may.
Ah, eh, ano pala, eh, ino's na lang natin, manap. Uh, kulang pa pala tayo ng mga, ano, travel. 30, 30, what? 30, 30,000 po, pa, susunod na, supplement po natin.
Wala comment? I hope.
They, uh, move the precision number 72-279, approving the programming of 18,500,000 from activated counterpart for completing of one to market road from national highway to city of Sisipan barangay Penang, city of Nyeran, barangay Labo, 30% development fund finals, decision 72,400, I, the head, prior to the 24. Be adopted.
Seconded, as you know, and seconded, draft resolution number 232-279, approving the programming of 18,500,000 pesos from the unimplemented counterpart for completing of farm to market road from national highway to city of Agis Agis, barangay Penang, city of Tuyenya, barangay Labo, 20% development fund out of, out of fiscal year 2024 to other identified priority development project we approve on second reading and bigger report to the third and reading on this particular session. Third and final reading, okay? Councilor Jorca?
As the president, hindi po kasi nagawa ng draft, yung request po ng barangay product center, 3 days pinta kasong 7, November 7th, 8th, 9th.
Ano, po the bagay?
Ano, may, may, napisahan nila?
Sa, 7th.
Di, napisahan na po dito? Yung, abunlati, para.
Dito nasa, anasay business, siguro, aklang, sir. Third and final reading, approving the supplemental budget of fiscal year 2024 barangay punang, municipality of Spanula. Okay na kayo, wala na pong, tutul, be approved for third and final reading. Approving the program of 18,500,000 pesos from the unimplemented counterpart for completing of farm to market road from national highway to city of Agis Agis, barangay Penang, city of Tuyenya, barangay Labo. 20% development fund out of fiscal year 2024 to other identified priority project. Any comment? Be approved, wala na, be approved for third and final reading. Anasay business, Korga Jorca?
I hope, uh, move po lang, uh, sa, presiding, na po. I look at the mission, request in, Knapsani Kyri, owner of Red Phoenix Scatwick Arena requesting for endorsement to hold 3 days hack fight on November 7, 8, and 9, 2024 to be at a Red Phoenix Scatwick Arena, city of Tugmalat, barangay Purong, municipality of Spanula, Palawan, be adopted.
As been announced, any comment, amendment? Lanas, resolution regarding the request of Mr. Sanic Kyri, owner of Red Phoenix Scatwick Arena, for the resolution to hold 3 days pinta kasing, hack fight on November 7, 8, and 9, 21, to Pac Derby on November 17, 2024 at Red Phoenix Arena, city of Tagolat, municipality of Spanula, barangay, approved. Announcement and reminders? Councilor Jorca?
Hi, Goodman, po, uh, yung, napamiti nga, naputong, mga nakarami sa ilb, meeting ko, minuna pong schedule yung ating year end, November 27 to 30. So, kaya nga po, naglabas, sana, ako, na, kaya gagawan yun, at, gubing, magano ng travel natin, kasi nga po, baka, na, sa 30,000 yung abuting patirigis, nito, din natin. So, yun na po, at, saka, sana, gagawan yun, kung meron pang, ano, mapagbigyan tayo. Yun na po, at, isisend ko na lang po, agad yung communication, pag, dumating na, salamat po.
Any announcement, Korga Thompson?
Uh, sana yung, ano, eh, yung, ating, uh, task and plans, no? At busy, sana, mga priority na, contact, para, budget, no? Kasi, hindi pa lang langit, di, di, tawag na yata yung, oris, video. Eh, baka, paalisin tayo, baka, di pa rin, na, gusto um, dumating yung, ano, eh, yung, call, eh, sana, mga, tapad. Eh, para, priority, uh, contact, dito, yun na para.
Any announcement and reminders? Madam Secretary, or Councilor, or, main?
Lanas. Yung, may, tulang po dito sa secretariat, natin, dito sa, netbalot, balin, lana. Yung, gas station, po ni Mini Jamion, mga papel niya. Kung, maka, natin, mapupuusat yun. Mini Jamion, di po sa barangay highway. Kaya sabi, na, dito, na, puusat yun, kasi, badi ko, mga, alit, karamla. Kusok alin, na, jampo, ay, kalimta, ralang, atin. Papil po ni, Mini Jamion.
Ah? Mini? Mini, na, pare si, diya, badi ito?
Papil niya, kanina, mapang. Oh, pare si, kapisa, guys. Pero po, bang? Mini, 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 na, 60.
Ah, kwanan lang natin, Sanet Secretariat, so, napa.
Ah? Ah, si, panganap na lang. Pero, kala, talaga, dito?
Padala na lang yung resip kabis, para, ma, parang, ako, po, tala. Any announcement and reminders, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, officer, for reading information of everyone, dali na po, na, taktan yun, na rin po. Narising po namin ito, nung, uh, October 28, 11 na po, ng, umaga, yung cost-cutting measures and payables for year 2024. Uh, kaya po, ay, replenish na namin ng individual copies, but then, to clarify lang po, sa, mon, sir, kanina, ang nakasayang po ay si, Mama Kanta, and the, OIC po, ata, ito siya, Steve, Sir Steve Manso. Ito po ay sign, nung, October 16, 2024 po, when was OIC, so according to this, due to unrealized collections against estimated target collections for local expenditure program for fiscal year 2024, we incurred shortfall in revenue collection. Per budget operations, man well, for local government units, any shortfall in revenue collection should signal the deferment of non-priority expenditures and the non-release of the allotments indicated as reserve. To comply with this, and as a cost-cutting measure, memorandum order number 2024-04, 2024-05, and 2028 series of 2024 had been issued by the local chief executive, honorable Abnera Poyentesorio, attached herewith, despite of this memorandum orders, there are offices that fail to comply. So, section 337 of the local government code provides that the disbursements in accordance with appropriations in the approved annual budget may be made from any local fund with the custody of the treasurer, but the total disbursements from any local fund shall in no, in no case exceed 50% of the uncollected estimated revenue accruing to such local fund in addition to the actual collection. So, according to this one, in summary, tayo po ay, national tax allotment dependent, or IRA dependent, NTA dependent. That is why it is stressed that we follow the memorandum orders na issue dati na magwithhold po ng appropriations sa MOE for unrealized income ng fiscal year 2024, 10% po ito, sumulat po tayo sa budget, as per instruction of the council then, na huwag na tayong magwithhold ng another 10%, kasi nabawasan na tayo. But, kung natatandaan niyo po, naka-stop ang inyong, ang, pag-disburse or pag, pag-obligate ni budget nakaraan, unless mag-10%, magwithhold tayo ng 10%. But then, na-excrewed po ang office na saguni ang bayan, yun nga lang po, wala tayong papel na nagsasabi na inexcrewed na tayo, kasi nag-automatic obligation na lang. Walang papel na binigay sa atin, na ang request po natin ay approved. Doon, nag-call lang po, na, na-obligate na, so wala po kaming magamit na basis ngayon na tayo po ay excluded sa 10% na pag-hold. So, as such, tayo po ay affected pa rin na mag-withhold po ng, ano, then, tayo po ay ina, dinad, dinidiscourage na mag hold ng team-building activities and stress debriefing po, so yun po ang, mga memorandum orders po na inistress po, na, alongside sa cost-cutting measure, dapat po ang adding withhold ay sundin, so kung mangyayari po yun, baka, maliging apektado yung, inyong traveling allowances, plus sa atin po kasi, yung, ating others, kaya wala na po tayong meryenda, and ano, wala na pong, na, ano, na po, nag-stop na po ang obligation para doon, so, mag-process, kaya po yun, tayo ay affected, but according to them po, kapag inasikasun niyo raw po agad yung travel ninyo, i-insure lang na meron kayong cash advances. Mas maganda raw po kasi na may cash advance, at least magle-liquidate na lang kayo unlike ng ire-reimburs ninyo, kasi, wala po yung kasiguraduhan. So, since may nakan po kayo ng last week, siguro po, i-inform niyo kami agad regarding the, um, yung communication po, para ma-process agad yung vouchers ninyo, iscentralized na lang po namin dito, kung okay lang po sa inyo. Sa centralized preparation na lang po ng office, hindi na po doon sa stops, sa stop ninyo po. So, kami na po mag-process at ipapadala po namin agad para ma-insure na mayroong cash advance po, yun po. Lahat po ba, sa, sa?
Lahat, to, 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 ganun na. Any announcement and reminders? Korga Thompson?
Ay, palang, pala, pala, po, na, dita, ni Esia, ni Esia, po, nandun, nandun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any announcement and reminders? Lanas, better, hey, adjournment? Councilor, Thompson?
Uh, matangal po, ay, detares po, ang ating regular session.
As been announced, seconded, the regular session of summer bayan is adjourned.